To order here on Tuesday, September 17th at 5:30 PM. And welcome everyone this evening for coming out. And I'd like to especially recognize former Mayor Nancy Hunter, Mayor Larry Hammett, Mayor and Judge Don Jones, Senator Bobby Glasgow for being here this evening. And all the citizens that are here that have come out tonight to hear the council discussion and debate on two items that we have on the agenda tonight. Obviously, the primary focus, I think, of everybody being here this evening is because of the second item on the agenda, which is when we're going to consider an ordinance to adopt a tax rate for 2013. There's been a lot of discussion about tonight in our community. And I want to tell you, as we have talked recently and reminded ourselves in the council, and I think you heard it from several council members last night, or excuse me, last week, about the privilege that we have to serve you in the community. And I personally want to say that that's an honor for me. It's humbling to be here tonight in front of you to understand that we are here first and foremost to serve you in the community. And we take that responsibility very deeply and feel a sense of obligation to this community that I know we all share, or you wouldn't be here tonight. There was some discussion at the end of last week about the room and the makeup of the room and some of the irony of that. And I want to begin tonight by saying that my single purpose in my remarks. Okay, I just got a note here from Cindy. The TV is on in the lobby. If anyone wants to watch it from there, if you can't see, or if you want to move out there, that's fine as well. So, thank you for that. There's been a lot of discussion about what the purpose of tonight is. And yeah, we are voting on a tax rate. But I want to begin by saying that as Mayor, my goal of tonight is for us to walk away from here as a community united with a sense of purpose and direction, that we put the community first, and that we understand that sometimes that takes compromise. And I want to talk about that because I feel like it's a responsibility of mine because of the division that we have in the council right now about what right looks like, to give my vision of what I think that is. And I have a proposal that I'm going to start the meeting out with tonight because I want everyone to take that in context as they make their remarks. Because I think it's critical that we distill this down to what the real issues are. Okay? And so, I'm going to do that. So, if you'll give me a moment to just talk through that. There's two issues that have come up in this discussion. The first has been last week about whether pay adjustments should be provided for city And Mr. Evans presented a summary of that. There was discussion in the council, and I think we all agree on the council that that is a priority. The second issue is whether or not to raise taxes. And is that needed? And there's been debate and discussion primarily in the first meeting two weeks ago about that issue. Let me talk about the pay policy for just a minute because I think that is very critical to the understanding of how to move forward on those two issues. First of all, we have a pay policy that was passed in 2009. That pay policy has two key components to it. One is an annual adjustment to pay, a pay increase based on the Consumer Price Index. In other words, if the economy is increasing the cost of living, the intention of the council is for pay raises to be made to accommodate that increase in living. That is included in this budget. It's a 1.6 is the CPI for this year, and so that is included in the budget that has been passed. The second part of that is the thing that I talked about last week that we unfortunately don't have right now. And that is a survey that tells us what pay rates should be. In other words, if you're making $30,000 today, should you make 35 in your position? We're not going to have that information until 1 November. In the budget, the previous budget that was amended, there was a $1.4 increase, 1.4% increase to accommodate that, which amounted to $116,000. The overall pay included in the budget was 3%, which is the same as what was included last year. So, do my proposal. My proposal is to provide up to $300,000 in the coming fiscal year for pay adjustments to civilian employees of the city. Not 116,000, but up to 300,000. And do that with no tax increase. Thus, the compromise. We provide a pay increase to the employees that are so critical to the success of this And we do that based on a point that I'll get to here in a minute. We do that also without having to raise taxes. I want to give to the council this evening, if you'll look at this and just take one and pass it down. And I've got extra copies. There's not enough for everybody that's in the room. But if you'll please take one of these and just pass it around. And y'all please share. One of the key assumptions in the budget this year deals with sales tax and how much sales tax is anticipated to be generated next year. The front page, which is page three from the budget this year, shows a chart that goes back 10 years that details the sales tax for Stevenville. And you don't have the color in front of you, but the council does. The blue bars indicate the actual sales tax revenue that was generated. The red bar indicates what was budgeted. All right? So, that's just a point of reference. And I will say, the last sentence of the paragraph that they're on sales tax says, "As always, we have been taking a more aggressive approach in projecting sales tax revenues for the next year." Now, I want to draw your attention to the top of that chart because this year's anticipated revenue is 5.3 million. We've budgeted for next year 5.2 million, which is an indication that we, when the budget was put together, felt like that Stevenville's economy would actually shrink next year, that there would be less sales tax generated in Stevenville next year than this year. All right? If you'll look at the next page, which is a chart. This chart takes that bar chart and puts it in a line graph. And it takes the numbers that you saw in the bar and just puts it in lines. And it shows, in the red line, which is the bottom line, what we have budgeted. And it shows in the blue line what the actual dollar amounts have been. There is a straight line superimposed over the blue line. That shows the trend. What has the trend been over 10 years? Because I don't think that it's in the best interest of the community for us to make a decision based on a single year or even two years. So, this looks at 10 years' worth of history as far as sales tax is concerned. And if you draw that line and extend it out, and you look at 2014, what number do you see? You see 5.5 million, 5.5 million. That 5.5 million is $300,000 more than what's in our budget today. As some may argue that that's a very aggressive, unachievable number. But let me draw your attention to a couple of other numbers on the chart. It's a 3.8% increase projected over 2013. Next year, the state of Texas has projected that the economy will grow at 4.8%. If you pull 1% out for oil and gas, that gets us back to 3.8. So, it's in line with that. It's also below what the 10-year average increase has been for our community, which is 5.3%. All right? Let's say as a council that we don't like that number, that we think that that's too aggressive. Well, all it takes is 1.4% to get that 116 back. But I think my challenge to the council that I want to present tonight is that, why should we settle for 1.4, $116,000, when we don't even know what the answer is yet? We don't know what the pay increase should be. We won't know until 1 November. What if the pay increase says we need $1 million? It might. You see, my proposal tonight is not business as usual. Business as usual has been to put a percentage increase against pay and say, "Hey, you're getting an increase, now go back to work." I'm not satisfied with that answer. I want to know what the right answer is. I want to know what you really deserve, and I want us as a council tonight to commit to doing that. Now, I think that it's a conservative approach for us to look at 5.5 million. But I don't think we need to decide that tonight. There are opportunities in the future for us to decide what that number is. But even if you keep the number at this year's number, which is 5.3 million, that covers the cost of the previous pay increase that was needed. Both of those, neither of those require a tax increase. Both provide pay adjustments for city employees. The other thing I want y'all to understand, my position as Mayor, is that, and there's been a lot of debate about conservative, are you conservative, are you this, or that? And I've heard all that talk. You know, I don't care, and that's one of the beauties of the local government that we have in Stevenville. I don't define myself as Mayor as a Democrat or Republican. I define myself as a citizen of Stevenville. And our purpose tonight is to look at that issue. So, I'm not saying by bringing up this that there may not be the need for a tax increase in the future. But I think if there is, we owe it to the citizens of this community to have that defined and based on fact. And we don't have that for you. That information isn't available until 1 November in this situation as it regards to pay. So, what my proposal does is it gives us time. It gives us time to sort out what the pay ought to be for the city employees. It also allows us to not have to raise taxes at this time because we don't know what that number should be. The course that I would recommend that the council take from here is to obviously, since there isn't a need for a tax increase at this time, to not increase taxes tonight. For us to commit to 1 November as far as the pay adjustment is concerned, and understand what that is, and prioritize those requirements. And then, as soon as we know what that is, then reconsider a budget adjustment to take into account the sales tax that we will generate. There is a tremendous amount of construction that's going on in this community. Tarleton has an all-time high enrollment. All indicators are that we are going to see an increase in the coming year. Now, some have argued that we don't want to put ourselves in a position of risk. And I would say that's why we can take time with this and understand, do we want to assume that that number is 5.5, 5.4, 5.3? Any of those will work, but none of them require a tax increase. And both achieve the original objectives that we've been debating. That is, provide a pay adjustment to city employees and have no tax increase associated I think that as we move forward in the discussion tonight, I would ask that we try to keep it simple, as I've tried to do. There's just two issues that we're talking about. Both of them deal with, I think, preserving and looking out in the best interest of our community as we move forward. And with that, I will move on for discussion within the council about the issue that we have. I've got a couple of citizen requests for comment. I'll look to be able to do that. I guess we got Ms. Sharon Zachary. Would you like to come forward and speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were asking. Sorry. Sharon, I did look at it this time. My name is Sharon Zachary. I live at 649 East Long Street and have lived here in Stevenville for 25 years. A couple of things. I did get the budget, and I did look through it, and I learned some things.
Excuse me, is that microphone on?
I don't know. Is it on? Do I need to get closer? Okay. I did, all right. One of the remarks last week was that not enough citizens came forward to express their views. And I'd like to address that briefly. You've asked for people to come and speak out, and we've heard about your disappointment that few folks have. Firstly, I'd like to say this is a small town, and it's hard to come out and deny your neighbors a raise, and then you've got to wake them breakfast at Jake and Dorothy's. And, you know, so we understand your position because you work with the city employees. So, we have sympathy for that. Also, I'd like to say sometimes there is a perceived, I'm not saying it's real, but a perceived balance of power that is very unequal. Like it or not, City Hall has a lot of power that the individual does not. The saying, "You can't fight City Hall," came about for a reason. And I want to make very, very clear that I believe this would never happen here in Stevenville. But people do worry about it, especially if they own businesses. You just remarked, you folks are all elected in a deliberately nonpartisan political fashion. Even though we probably know who might be Republicans in federal elections and who might be Democrats, City Council is supposed to be politically neutral. City Council is supposed to be about the wise fiscal guidance of the city for all of the citizens and not just the city employees. And really, citizens should be a part of the deliberative process that you all volunteered to take on and perform, hopefully wisely and with fiscal restraint. After a more in-depth examination of the budget process, I have discovered that you practice baseline budgeting, which even Governor Cuomo is on record, and I provided one of your members with a quote, as calling it a sham and a deception, even though he went right on doing it. With baseline budgeting, you immediately remove from the negotiating table one half of the budget process, namely, cutting costs and cutting your losses. If you were a CEO and told your stockholders that you were spending just as much as last year, regardless of the economy, regardless of what your sales were, regardless of any other pertinent facts, you would be out on your ear. You wouldn't be the CEO anymore. I'm sorry. Whoever is advising this accounting choice needs to know that there are better accounting processes and accounting options. If I had spent the same this year as I did last year, there would be a closed sign on my door. In addition, I was shocked to discover that our first responders are paid so little in comparison to our office staff, and that everyone is getting the same percentage raises, regardless of difficulty of job or even job performance, and no merit element in it. Further, someone making in excess of $100,000, and I'm using easy percentages so we can all visualize it, if raises went through and got a 5% raise, would get $5,000, whereas a poor clerk earning $20,000 gets $300 a year. You can take a nice trip to Disney World on $5,000. $300 doesn't make a big difference in your lifestyle. In addition, I have to wonder if persons making high salaries are recommending these increases completely out of concern for the pocketbook of the rank and file, or possibly their own. And I would recommend, just for the proper appearance of propriety, that they recuse themselves from the raise and ask for a separate vote on their own. I like my employees, and I pay them much more than most fast food folks earn. But, and here is the catch, I choose to do so out of my checkbook and not someone else's. Their smiles when they get a raise and their frowns when they do not come from my checkbook. You folks work with, and you like your city employees, as I do. I like all of you. But when you get their smiles, I and all the other citizens are paying for the goodwill you are earning, not you, who have the responsibility to all of the citizens and not just the 140 or so you know at City Hall. I know I've gone over my time. Is it possible? I need probably one more minute. Can I get a motion for that?
Well, let me just ask you to just wrap up concisely.
Okay. In addition, I agree with the Mayor. I don't understand why first responders are not on a separate list for raises. They're the folks who guard us in the night, rescue us from burning houses, and they keep us alive till we can get to a hospital. They risk their lives, and in the event of a disaster, they will leave their families to come dig us out of the rubble of our homes. They should come first. While we're on this subject, city employees who run heavy equipment, are out sanding streets in cold weather and repairing water mains in 105-degree heat, who can also be injured on the job and whose job involves a lot of wear and tear on their bodies, ought to have another separate pay category. And while I mean no disrespect to office jobs, the fact remains that there is air conditioning, heat, a coffee machine, and moreover, very little risk to one's life and limb. These folks should also have a third tier of payroll. Maybe there's more divisions. I don't know. Further thought, I don't think we need any tax increase. We need wise fiscal management and hard choices. And I think we could afford larger pay raises for lower-paid employees if we were wise instead of impudent. And thank you for listening. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service because it's a hard job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
(applause). Okay, Mr. Goble?
I am very glad to hear and read the two articles from the city council that was in the paper. Well, I agree with her now, at least they published articles for us to read. What my problem is, is competition. I'm sure glad to hear that you all are working on holding the line item on here and trying to hold the taxes down. The board, Water Board, right here says they got, this year and last year, they were able to lower their taxes on the water. I asked for 5% decrease, as you well know, which I didn't think it was really realistic when I asked for it, but I needed to get your attention. Competition is really what I'm interested in. The two articles that's in the paper kind of seem like it wanted to knock competition in the head, like it has been for the last several years. The citizens has wanted competition in here, wanted businesses in here to pay the taxes for the homeowners. Still, we're not getting it. I know you guys are working on it, but we're not getting it. I know Brahms tried to get in here, and Lowe's tried to get in here. For some reason or another, we couldn't get our heads together to get them. And there was a gun manufacturer, he wanted in here. We're not having the competition. They say we can't have the competition to get with the businesses that's here right now. Okay, what about Allsops? Four of them have gone in. These other filling stations around here, they go, most of them, go down with Allsops. That's competition. That's working. They're not going out of business. They're competing for their prices and for their customers. We can do this with most any business. The business is already here. It's been here long enough. They know everybody, and people's going to take care of them and work with them. But, right now, like most everybody in here, goes to Granbury, Westford, somewhere, to do their shopping. And I can go over there and buy my gas, and still do my shopping and everything else. It don't cost me no more, and I get cheaper prices over there. Why can't we do it here with competition? That is what we need, is the competition here. If all the people that worked in Fort Worth from here was here tonight, we'd be holding this meeting in the high school auditorium. Because all these people don't want to drive out of town to go to work. They want jobs here. But I do appreciate your thoughts, and it sounds like you're going to hold the taxes. I'd sure appreciate it if you do. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Wallace?
My name is Mark Wallace. I live at 1402, pardon me, Northdale Avenue. And members of the city council and Mayor, I appreciate all the hard work that you've done in working and putting together this budget this year. I know this was not fun at all for everybody. Each one of you should have received a letter from me today, so I will not, I'm not going to belabor the contents of the letter. However, I do want to say that hearing the proposal tonight from the Mayor, that I'd just like to say that I support this proposal, and this is one of the greatest things that I've heard in a city council budget meeting in several years. Thank you very much.
My name is Matt Miller. Address is 936 Private Road 897, Stevenville. Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate all you do. And, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the proposal today. I think that is a compromise that I hope that we can all live with. That being said, as we move forward, I'm going to challenge the premise that all of our budget is based on, which was already discussed tonight. See, in the government, government is the only entity that gets more every year. The only one. It has no, it does nothing to mirror real life at the city level, at the county level, at the state level, or at the federal level. Since I got a chance to speak two weeks ago, my 1997 Taurus, which was my first company car out of the Air Force, had a transmission problem. Now, my son, whose car that is, is all ready to get a new one. But it wasn't his money to spend. It was Mom and Dad's. Well, Mom and I weighed the options. We could have gone out and got a brand-new one. We could have gone out and bought a newer used one and spent thousands of dollars that we didn't have budgeted. Or, we could pay for the transmission that actually is going to cost more than the car is worth right now, but that's what fit in our budget. So, the transmission is being fixed, and he'll move on, and he'll have the transportation he needs when he needs it for the time being. But see, he's disconnected from the money. My kids think there's a money tree out back. And I sometimes feel like the government is the same way. But I'm the money tree, and we are all fed up with being the money tree. The property tax that was proposed, it may be small, but when you add it to everything else that has been piled on, the citizens of this community and the rest of the country, we've had enough. Thank you. To the people who live in Stevenville and that are here, to the employees of the city, I appreciate all that you do. But I'm going to challenge you tonight. See, I used to be a federal employee. I used to be an Air Force pilot. I used to get those cost of living increases every year. But then I got out into the private sector, and those cost of living increases don't I got sick and tired of somebody else telling me what I was worth. So, I took advantage of the greatest country that we all live in, the United States of America, the land of opportunity, and I got out and decided to build something for myself so that I had control over what I was worth. In five years' time, I own one of the biggest vending companies in the country today from nothing. Jamie and Eric Hayden started a little real estate firm just a couple of years ago. I watched them start it. Today, they have one of the most successful real estate firms in the county. Why? Because we live in a land of opportunity. And I challenge you, if you don't like the pay that you're getting now, continue to ask for more, but go do something about it outside of what you do full-time. Because there's no excuse. Because there's no excuse, if you're in this country today, if you're not happy with what you make. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to come forward that didn't turn in a sheet beforehand? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lori Thomas and I live at three zero four eight nine State Highway six. I bank in Stevensville. My dentist and my doctors are in Stevensville. I eat, I shop. My family lives in Stevensville. I think one of the main things that has come up several times this evening, perhaps not loudly enough, is that citizens have to cut their budgets. They have to. And I have looked over this budget and I see no cuts, not a single solitary dime. And I see a two thousand dollar Parks and Recreation budget, two thousand dollars of postage. And my question to the council members and also my challenge to the employees is you can't find one percent twenty dollars to cut out of a two thousand dollar budget? But you do expect me to come up with an extra ten for you? See, the problem that pits the citizens against the government is as it was stated before. Government never, never decreases, ever. There's a feeling that somehow, there's this entitlement bar that runs straight across this room. You always get more and we pay for it. And people are tired. We are stressed. We are working two and three jobs to pay for what we're doing already. There is no great economy out here and if anybody, excuse me, mayor, sir, but projections are all very well and good. I'd like to know what year-to-date is and I would like to see whether it is running to your projections. And the problem with projections is that they assume something. They assume that all is well and good in the world and it isn't. And we all, as citizens, know that. We are struggling and we are tired. And we do not see a twenty-dollar cut in a twenty-billion-dollar budget. Not one. Not one. And I, for one, would like to challenge the council to return, or to at least challenge, on every line item that is in that budget, that two-hundred-page budget, that you can't find one percent out of anything? And again, I exclude first responders, because they put in much more than any of us will probably ever do in our life. But you can't find twenty dollars out of two thousand? You can't find seventy-five dollars out of a seventy-five-hundred-dollar budget? It just has to grow. It just has to grow? That is why we are on this side. We are on this side and you are on that side and there's animosity in the room and frustration. Because we never, ever, ever see a budget that is cut. The baseline budgeting is a sham. Every year, my ten-year-old could do the budget. Take this budget from last year, multiply it by three point five percent, add those numbers, that's our budget. That doesn't take a rocket scientist to do that. But it does take effort to go back and review each line item in that budget and say, you know what? Maybe we could cut twenty dollars here, fifteen dollars here, travel less over here, reduce our gas budget, and come to our citizens and say, guess what? We reduced the budget. Hallelujah. And I thank you for all of your time and the opportunity to speak.
Anyone- anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Hannah Dow and I live at ten ninety West Elm Street. I know there haven't been very many people that support the tax increase, although after looking at the budget and the things that y'all have been saying over the past months and weeks and stuff, I think that we need to relook at raising the tax rate, because we are currently taking money from our reserves and how do you expect to keep taking money from the reserves? Because once it's gone, it's not there anymore. Like the guy said, there's not a money tree out back. We can't, we can't do that. If we don't raise the taxes, then we won't have any money left to spend on our budgets. We won't have a budget anymore. I wanna know what the plan is after the reserves are gone, if you don't get what you're projected. Last year, we said that we didn't spend as much as we had projected to make, but we still dipped into our reserves. Why did we do that? So I just wanna know what the plan is. If it doesn't go the way you plan on it going, what's plan B? Where are you gonna go with the money that you don't have? Where's our town gonna be then?
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor?
Uh, yes, sir.
I didn't sign a sheet because I didn't think I was gonna get the smoke at this point.
Alright.
I'd like to take just a few minutes to discuss you guys.
Alright, Mr. Hammid?
My name is Larry Hammid. My wife, Pat, and I live at one oh one B, Willaline. I have contacted everyone on the council with the exception of Russ. I'm here tonight to voice my thanks to you guys for everything you do. I've sat in those chairs for almost sixteen years and I know that all the cuts you make in your budget workshops and your budget meetings don't come out at the end in your budget. But I'm here in support of not only our city employees, but of you guys, all of you guys, and our city. We can't let this divide us like it's doing. I've served with probably countless numbers of council members and I've seen what it does to our city when we get this way. But you had a great proposal. You know what I sent you today. I appreciate you a lot. I appreciate all of you guys. But let's get this done. Let's do it on conservative numbers. I know that Mark has done that in the past years. Our community is growing greatly. And let's get this city on track, because I think when the surveys come out, we're gonna be far, far deficient. It's easier to take that step now than to wait and take a million dollars then. But thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Okay.
Will Mayor accept a motion at this time?
I recognize Ms. McDowell.
Thank you, Mayor. I like this proposal. I think for years and years and years, we have been too conservative in estimating the revenues and five point four or five point five will be closer to reality than the five point two. I would like to move at this time a tax rate of forty-eight and a half cents with no tax increase for the citizens.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDowell, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to approve a tax rate of forty-eight and a half cents. Open the floor for any discussion.
I've got some discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pendleton?
I'm gonna be a little unorthodox, you might say, but I've learned that sometimes visual aids are helpful presentations. So I apologize if I'm offending anyone today, as the council traditionally operates. But I think it's important, this issue is important, where we need to see how I view it and how we really ought to look at this budget, in my opinion. As many of y'all know and all the emails I've received, I appreciate them. I truly do. And I appreciate you all being here tonight, because it's neat to see our government work. And this is it working right here. And I'm gonna come down here so I can flip my pages from circus. But even the ones that have sent me the nastiest of emails, I still appreciate you, because it means you care, plain and simple. And so even though we might not agree on one issue, I know in the future we're gonna agree on what's best for Stevensville. Because bottom line, folks, that's what we're all here to do today. I hope anyways to do what is best for Stevensville, but of course, we're all gonna differ on how to get there. So I think it's important to start this conversation off, though, with who is Stevensville? And I think everyone that's on this council and everyone out there is gonna have a different opinion on who is Stevensville. But I'm gonna tell you who I think Stevensville is. Word. Education, industry, retail, agriculture. We have one of those diverse economic climates you will see in any city in the state of Texas. I guarantee you that. Go out there and look, because I have, and you will not see a more diverse economic climate in Stevensville, Texas. And that's what makes us unique. And let's talk about Stevensville back from today to two thousand. In two thousand, we had fourteen thousand twenty-one people. Today, we boast eighteen thousand two hundred and eight people. That's an eighteen percent increase. Folks, Stevensville's growing and now we can all sit here and talk about the rate which it's growing at. But it's growing. It's gonna continue to grow and we're gonna continue to be successful. No matter if we set the tax rate today at forty-eight and a half or forty-nine and a half, I promise you Stevensville is going to be successful and grow. Now, let's talk about this graded forty-nine and a half sit number. You would think that this is what's, well, it is. It's what's striking the fear in everybody here today. And I think really what it stems down to is two points. Number one, as we inch closer to that fifty cent mark, that number just strikes fear in people's minds. It doesn't mind. Fifty cents, for some reason, gives me goosebumps at night, but we're not there. And I don't think we're gonna be there for quite some time if we continue to take a conservative approach like we've done for the past forty, thirty years. In nineteen eighty-nine, our tax rate was forty-seven cents. Two thousand and two, our tax rate was forty-eight and a half. At two thousand and thirteen, forty-eight and a half. Tell me one thing that you paid the same price for today that you paid for ten years ago that you get the same service, same amount of service without more. Does that justify a tax increase? No. But I think we need a rise, though. We get a pretty good investment here in Stevensville. We don't come to you as the city council or as the city government and asking to take all your money to go waste it. We operate on a very focused budget to do what we think is essential to provide for our citizens. The neat thing about city government, this is not Washington, D.C., this is not Austin, Texas. We're all fed up with those people and we're not sitting up here padding our own pocketbooks. We're trying to make decisions what we think is best for Stevensville and our citizens. Plain and simple. We are in the business of providing services. The city's not meant to operate on a, as my company operates, or any of y'all's companies, paying money. Do we wanna lose money in everything we do? No. But we're in the business of providing services. We are service-oriented. Now, I urge you to go out there and look to other cities and see what our tax rate is compared to other cities. And I- I think you'll find that Stevensville's done a pretty, pretty damn good job. Ennis, Texas, sixty-nine and a half. Cleveland, seventy-four. Weatherford, they are cheaper, forty-six cents. But I think they have a little different tax structure and they also have some general, some other places to generate revenue we don't have here in the city. Granbury, same thing. They are cheaper, thirty-nine cents. But Mineral Wells, fifty-one. Plainview, Texas, fifty-seven. Broward, seventy-four. And then you go down ten miles a dozen, a dollar thirteen. I think that is truly a reflection of what we've done in our history in order to keep our taxes low and providing the services we provide. So I think we need to go back and look at that as well, but we've done a pretty good job of keeping this tax base low. Once again, does that mean we need to go out there and raise property taxes? No, not at all. But it's something to take into consider when you make a decision, though. Plain and simple, this is what everybody's been asking. Freddie Pendleton, why do we need a tax increase? Why do we need a two percent, a one penny tax increase, ten dollars per hundred thousand? Why do we need it? First thing, services. We are in the business of providing services. Either we provide services and we provide a high quality of services, or we provide no services. And that's up to us to make and y'all can provide input. To me, services is the number-one stimulating factor for economic development in our city. To me, that's what cities do. If you provide a high quality of services, especially in Stevensville, Texas, economic development will take care of itself. Second thing, reserve spending. As I touched on a second ago, this budget calls for four hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars in reserve spending. Now, of course, we've been fortunate in years past that we have been conservative on what ourselves tax revenue is. But we've been able to make that money back and I predict we'll make it back again this year. But what if we don't make it back? And this time in a year, we're gonna have two million dollars less, less in reserves because of this money here, plus some grant management programs we've already obligated ourselves to. Two million dollars less next year, no matter what. The third thing, salary adjustment. I think we've all got caught up in this idea that we're only increasing budgets or increasing the tax rate to provide for more money for city employees. I'm sorry that I don't see it that way. Go back and look at the budget. The cost of the city to do business has increased. We all know that. It's affected homes, our own businesses, and we, the city, have done a great job of trying not to offset that cost on the citizens. But unfortunately, we're at a point now where we're gonna have to ask the citizens to bear their share a little bit more. But we, as a city, are still going to do more than we can to keep that cost as low as possible. I can promise you not a single person on this council wants to ever increase the taxes, but sometimes it's inevitable. And I think that's where we're at. November first, Mayor talked on November first. Now, I'm sure I'm glad you did, because he's challenged us and he's told the employees that we're gonna do some better, your pains, and we need to do something. I'll be the first to tell you, across-the-board adjustments are not the answer. They're not. Because there's some employees that are absolutely paying. But when you have a police officer that's working the streets making thirty-nine thousand, now I can go to Granbury and that same police officer make forty-nine thousand dollars. We need to keep those people here. We need to recruit, retain, and educate. And that's what we need to do and we can't do that unless we've got the money. So the good thing about November first, if we increase this tax rate to forty-nine and a half cents, we're not gonna have to estimate or guess or predict where our revenue's gonna be. We know we're gonna have extra money sitting around and I challenge this council to use that money to allocate to positions that need it most. I think we can do that. Lastly, growth. I know it might sound contradicting, but it does, growth. Our tax rate grows, we're providing more services and we're gonna continue to grow as a city and do more things. I promise y'all that. Lastly, to finish up, this is, here is the decision we have to make today. What do we want to do? And to me, it's not, it's just simple. Number one, we raise taxes, raise them to forty-nine and a half cents, two percent tax increase, or we cut services. And I'm torn right there, because those are, to me, the two logical choices you make. Dr. Cross has said it and several other people have said it before, if we don't want to increase revenue, then we only have a decision to cut services. And I'm, I'm in support of that. But at the same time, though, is that what's best for Stevensville? I tell you, no, it's not. Cutting services is not what's best for Stevensville. That's what makes Stevensville unique and a great community is, because we have such great services. Go out there and see what other cities are doing and I promise you, our employees, our city staff, the services we provide, in my opinion, are the best and money to buy, especially the price we're paying currently. So lastly, I'm gonna tell you what, folks. Somebody touched on that in our studio room and it's right. And it is dividing the way between our community, but we're all this thing together. I'll tell you what, it is all good. Because if you go somewhere else and look at other places, we're all sitting in pretty good shape. I promise you that. No matter if we're fighting over a penny tax rate, in my opinion, I think that's a sign of how good we're doing, that we get this much support through criticism because of the penny tax rate. Now, if we're here trying to raise it five cents, which maybe it should be five cents, you know, we're at this advantage here that many of y'all don't know in Stevensville, because we don't have what's called a four-B tax structure. We don't have a percentage of sales tax that goes towards economic development. So we can go out and give somebody five hundred thousand dollars or bring a building up to code and get them moving and ready. We don't have that in Stevensville, Texas, because we choose to keep our taxes lower, because we feel low taxes and providing quality services are two major reasons we can drive economic development. So if we wanna put that initiative back on the ballot from the voters and raise your property taxes to fifty-five cents, which might be, in my opinion, where they need to be at, if we wanna do that, great. I'm not supportive of that. And I don't think any y'all are going to even wanna see that kind of tax rate. But that's why we have a problem with economic development in Stevensville, is because we don't have the money like Paris, Texas, or other places, to throw up these people. And I don't think that's right. That's not what promotes commerce and that's not what promotes free trade and it's economic growth. Businesses should do this because of competition like Mr., like Freddie said here. Competition is what drives economics in business. Why is it all good here? Lastly, we've got low taxes, folk. Like I said, it's not a reason to increase them, but we've got low taxes. We've got a great labor force and all y'all here today. Y'all do a great job of providing the jobs and services y'all do. And employers, future employers, they know that. They see that. That's what brings people to Stevensville, Texas, the quality of our labor force. Last, steady growth and a diverse economic climate. Because all of that, that is Stevensville, Texas, folk. We're all in this together. I ask for you to think about it and not just to hear the mere words of tax raise and say we're adamantly opposed to it, because there's a lot more to it than just raising taxes. We're here in return to provide a high, the highest quality services we provide to you as citizens, because that's our job. That's what cities do. We're not up here, like I said, padding our own checkbooks. We're doing what we think we can do to provide y'all with the best quality of services. And if we don't wanna do that, that is fine, but we're gonna cut services back, so we don't have to put more burden on the taxpayers, so. So I've taken more enough time, and I just hope that kind of explains some issues to all of you, so you can see if that works out.
Anyone else like to, uh, Dr. Cross? I have a question or two, and then I'll have a few remarks. First of all, I'm looking at the chart, sales tax receipts. According to the regression line here, uh, we're, there's a prediction of five million, five hundred thousand dollars income. And I need to have some sort of understanding is, uh, I mean, it, it seems to me as though the line that the five million, five hundred thousand dollars is the product of the drawing of the regression line. And I would like to know, from an authoritative source, to what extent the five million, five hundred thousand dollars conforms with the objective factors in existence as of right now. Uh, because our budget had been predicated on a rather lower estimate, five million, two hundred thousand dollars. So which is the more reliable number and why? Five million, five hundred thousand or five million, two hundred thousand?
Well, I guess you're asking me that question, and I-
I'm asking anyone who has the answer.
Well, I, I, I think I have the answer. I, I think that, um, let me start, because a lady over here asked a question about, you know, what, what are the numbers? And where are we headed, and where is our economy? The state of Texas publishes the sales tax summaries, uh, for the fiscal year. And, um, twenty thirteen's numbers, um, to date, uh, through September show, and if you add into this what I'm gonna explain in a second, a rolling twelve average. In other words, you take October, November, and December and assume those are last year's numbers, so you don't assume any growth in the future. But you take all of the previous months. We are at five point two six million dollars. So we're within forty thousand of our estimated five point three million for the year. All right? So you can, you can assume that the economy is gonna constrict suddenly. Um, the time it took me to get across town this evening tells me otherwise. I know that that's anecdotal, but, um, I, I think that the, the, the numbers of Tarleton's growth from ten thousand to eleven thousand are, are not subjective. Those are, those are real. And the fact that nine hundred students are now housed in, uh, private sector, uh, accommodations versus dorms is also telling, uh, as far as the growth is concerned. So, looking at twenty fourteen, which is the more realistic number? Five point two million or a number higher than that? Because the state of Texas, again, is anticipating predicting a five point eight percent increase. That, that's a published number. Okay, what I tried to do is say, well, we are not affected tremendously by the oil and gas industry, so let's pull the one percent off. Let's, don't take credit for that. Let's say three point eight. Three point eight gets us right where that line is. So there's a way to confirm that. Another way to say is the answer at the bottom of the page in the ballpark. I mean, that's something that I've learned over the years. Don't just take the answer and say, that's right. Step back and say, in the context of what's going on, is it right? So let's look at the ten-year average. The ten-year average says that our, our growth is, is at a five point three percent rate. Again, that, that five point five number is, is below that as well. So, Dr. Cross, the, the point that I hope you, you take away from this is I, I see five-five as a ceiling of what we might anticipate in twenty fourteen. I'm not saying that's the right number, but I'm saying that it will be more than five-two. And I'm saying that it is realistic for it to be between five-three and five-three, five-five. I, I think that the, the, the other numbers that we've got to factor into this is to look at, uh, just from last month, and this is a lagging indicator, because we don't have current numbers for construction. But let me tell you, last year, year-to-date, there were fifty-two projects under construction with a valuation of six point four million. To date, there are currently thirteen at a value of fifteen point two, and there's a year-to-date calculated value. In other words, what the future may hold is sixty-eight projects at forty-one million. Okay, so tho- those are sales tax going to construction dollars that are anticipated. You look at the Mustang Ranch that's under construction right now, there's sales tax that we haven't recouped from that yet. There's the, the new students at Tarleton. Um, so those are all indicators. Uh, FMC, talked to Fernando, Fernando Carmusy this week. He's saying that their production's about to, uh, to pick up again. So, I mean, there, there are, th- this is an art and a science, and, and what is the right number? Uh, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is you, you look at this chart, and you look at the history, and you look at what was budgeted versus what the, the actual number was. Nine of eleven years, the budgeted number, the actual number was above that regression line, nine of eleven. To me, that's a pretty strong indicator. And also look at, at ten and eleven. Those are the years that are arguably the worst recession this nation has known since the depression. But you saw what happened there. It was two years after it really hit that our economy was impacted. And I really think that that's what is happening in Steenville with the recent growth at Tarleton. There, there will be a, a lagging, uh, gro- uh, increase in, but I haven't accounted for that. You, you, I could have said, hey, let's go with five or six percent, and let's make the numbers look good, and let's run with them. I, I'm not trying to argue that at all. I'm trying to present what I think is a conservative estimate, and I'm also trying to recognize the fact that we don't have to, we don't have to go to five-five. We can go to five-four or five-three. Five-three assumes no growth next year. That's a hundred thousand more dollars in our budget with no tax increase. To me, that's hard to, um, to not a- agree with. I, I mean, I know, I know it's, it's my, the time I've spent trying to understand what the problem is, based on the discussion that I, that I've heard over the last two weeks specifically, about, hey, there's an issue with city employee pay? And we got this issue with, with the tax increase. How do we reconcile that? Well, that's, so that's, that's a, that's my answer to your question. Did you have a comment, or? Mark, do you wanna, do you wanna, um, comment? Okay.
Uh, the only comment that I may have regarding the sales tax discussion has been that, that I've had throughout, uh, the budget deliberations throughout. Uh, and that has been that, uh, no matter what those estimates and projections are, that, uh, we are still, while we may receive additional revenue in excess, uh, we, the year is over with. The last several years, we have spent more than we brought in, even with, uh, the actual disparities that have been there.
Okay, Dr. Cross, you got another? Uh, yes. Uh, first of all, I would have liked more opportunity to discuss this, to discuss the accuracy, to discuss the validity of the methodology with which this was derived. I feel very uncomfortable voting either yay or nay on this issue on the basis of figures that I have just seen. Uh, I wish that this could have been, uh, that these data could have been offered much, much earlier in the budget process, so that they could be analyzed more thoroughly. And I would be uncomfortable casting a vote on the basis of this at this time. I would like to have this studied, reviewed. In the academic world, when research is produced, it is submitted to outside reviewers, anonymous reviewers, to determine the validity or lack thereof. And in the absence of the opportunity to more thoroughly study this, I just, uh, as I say, I'm uncomfortable voting on this. These data are roughly thirty minutes old. It may turn out that this is profoundly accurate. It may also turn out that this would be the sort of estimate that I might come up with. One can't say. And as I say, I just, I don't think it's been subjected to the, uh, analytical rig- rigor that can confirm or improve on, uh, uh, the figures. Now, this gets us to the main issue of whether or not to have a tax increase. As many of you know, I voted for the forty-eight and a half cent budget, the budget reviewed on that, uh, the budget based on forty-eight and a half cents. It was reported erroneously in the paper that I and others who voted for the budget were, in point of fact, voting to maintain a forty-eight and a half cent, uh, tax rate. That was a reasonable inference. In truth, I had not made up my mind one way or the other on the matter. As I said last week in discussion, I was hoping to change. I have decided to vote, for the time being, on the forty-nine and a half cent tax rate increase, based on discussions I've had with many people who have advocated the maintenance of the tax rate. And discussions that I have had with many people who have advocated an increase by a penny. I do have a couple of comments to make. First of all, I understand the emotions that have been elicited by a proposed one-cent tax increase. On one hand, there are different ways of looking at this. Yes, ten dollars per, uh, increase for, uh, a home assessed at a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, that's eighty cents a month. Uh, I first began circulating those figures myself. Others have either inferred them independently or have, uh, taken them from me. On the face of it, it does not look all that, like all that much, and one wonders, why are so many people upset with this, uh, prospect? And I think it's been explained not only adequately but eloquently this evening, uh, that if one looks at it within the larger context of higher taxes imposed on us by other communities, um, by the federal government, by the overall cost of living. This may not add much, but it does not help at all. It's part of the larger picture that people have to confront. I suspect that much of the emotionalism directed towards us is a function partly of the fact that many people feel assaulted from so many different directions, concerning higher taxes, higher cost of living, and so forth. But I also can't help but suspect that many of us are, that much of the, uh, emotionalism is being directed at us simply because we are more accessible. It's a lot easier to get to us than it is to get to a state lawmaker, or a U- US lawmaker, or even a county commissioner, or a school board member. We're here practically every week. It is very, very easy to find us, and very, very easy, uh, to voice one's opinion here. So I do understand that. I do not think this is an excessive tax increase. I understand the reasoning, I think, of those who differ from, who differ from me on this matter. Nonetheless, I have concluded that I will vote for the forty-nine and a half cent tax increase tonight, despite having voted for the forty-eight and a half cent budget. Because of the nature of our budgeting system, and because of a deficit growing to close to five hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Pendleton, in his, uh, remarks, which quite frankly are more brilliant and more eloquent than anything I can devise, has outlined the situation pretty well. Um, I have been on the council when we were bringing in surpluses, stashing them away. Some council members were saying, we're being, uh, too stingy, too miserly with the surpluses. We ought to spend more then. But for the last several years, we have been running deficits of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. We are diminishing our reserves by hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. That, ladies and gentlemen, is a pattern that is simply not sustainable. If we have a budget premised on a forty-eight and a half cent tax increase and a tax rate of forty-nine and a half cents, we're not going to reverse this process. We're still going to be running deficits this year, but we're going to be slowing down the process. We're going to be buying time until we reach the point where we're going to have to make budget decisions a lot harder than so far we've had to make. Either bigger tax increases than we have to make now, or bigger spending cuts. Now, this gets us into the contrast between the Steenville budget and local budgeting in general and the federal budget. At the federal level, there is no relationship between taxes and spending. People involved in the decision-making process in Washington may and probably have deluded themselves into thinking there is a relationship. They may try to get us to believe there's a relationship, but the plain blunt truth of the matter is that there is no such relationship. Two reasons. Number one, the federal government has unlimited borrowing power, based on the absence of any restriction whatsoever in the US Constitution, and based on the fact that of all the entities that have existed in the known universe, the federal government is by far the biggest. And therefore, it is far less conceivable that it could fail than anything else. That's reason number one. Reason number two, the federal government can print money. The federal government of all the entities in the United States is alone and unique in its capacity to print money. At Stee- in Steenville, things are a little bit different. Our borrowing capacity, thanks to state law, city charter, all that sort of neat stuff, our borrowing capacity is far more limited. Our capacity to print money is non-existent. We set up a printing press here, we're all going to get a one-way ticket to Huntsville. That's just the way it goes. That means that Steenville budgeting is radically different. In the city of Steenville, given the budget, given the economic structure, there is a direct relationship between taxes, revenue, spending, services. And that relationship is very simple to understand. Taxes go up, we get more revenue. We don't have the sort of tax structure that's going to, uh, that, uh, could give any credence to supply-side or voodoo economics. According to supply-side economic doctrine, cut taxes, erase revenue. That only depends on tax rates and tax structures that, quite frankly, simply are not in existence here. When taxes go up, revenue goes up, spending goes up, services go up. When taxes go down, revenue goes down. Spending must go down, that's the law. We have to balance the budget, and that means services go down. So that is the relationship. So, radical differences between our situation and the federal situation. So what does that mean for Steenville in the near future? Right now, four hundred and seventy thousand dollar deficit, based on the budget that we passed and that I voted for two weeks ago. We keep this up for a few years, and we will have no reserves whatever. Everything will have to be financed exclusively by taxes. We may have to have taxes going up far more rapidly than one cent a year. Or we may have to have service cuts. Less police protection, less fire protection, fewer water wells, less water. And I gotta tell you, folks, I'm not a criminologist, but I can tell you right now, we cut back on our police force, which we must inevitably do if we, when we get into service cutting. The criminals in Steenville are not going to say, ooh, uh, Steenville can spend less on law enforcement, therefore, in the interest of fair play, we'll cut down our criminal activity. We'll go elsewhere. Uh-uh, not going to happen. Fires will put themselves out eventually. But it is probably better for all concern if they're put out more rapidly with firefighters. Problem, firefighters like law enforcement officers cost, magic word, money. As far as water wells are concerned, if a water well breaks down, it's going to cost a lot of money to repair it. Nobody can go out to the water well and just look at it and say, water well, heal thyself, and then the water well begins pumping again. I have a sneaking suspicion that I'm probably the only one- I have a sneaking suspicion that I'm probably the only one who could do that, who could get a rise out of a water well. I go out to the well, I say, water well, heal thyself, it belches up one last ton of black gunk, and you gotta have a special election to replace me. That's the way it goes. So, that brings us back to why I supported the forty-eight and a half cent budget and the forty-nine and a half cent, and the forty-five, forty-nine and a half cent tax rate. I want the extra revenue, folks. I want the revenue to be added to our coffers. I want it to reduce the rate at which our deficits are expanding, our surpluses are diminishing. I want to postpone, as long as possible, the case when we have no reserves, we have to rely totally on taxes, we either gotta have bigger tax increases, bigger spending cuts, to balance the budget, because we can't print the money. And I'm especially concerned after talks I've had with, with various political activists in the community. Here's what I've noticed. Now, the question that I've kept raising in every forum I have been able to, before I'm told that I'm out of order, is this. Okay, folks, everyone wants tax cuts. Since tax cuts mean revenue cuts, revenue cuts mean spending cuts, spending cuts mean service cuts, what services do you want cut? We've had a grand total, in the three weeks of hearings, or four weeks, or whatever it's been, we've had a grand total of one concrete suggestion. Privatize Splashville. I don't know enough about Splashville, or the incidence of privatizing, to know how good or bad an idea it is, but that is the single lone idea. Every once in a while, you have, some people say, well, we gotta tighten our belts, which begs the question, okay, we gotta tighten our belts, we gotta spend less? Where? What services do we cut? Again, no answer. Last night, I was at a political meeting, and people were cheering the county commissioners, saying, county court is holding the line on taxes. People break out in applause. In a lapse of judgment, the person presiding over the meeting recognized me when I raised my hand. I know for a literal fact and beyond the slightest shadow of doubt he wishes that he had, and he shut me up in a pretty big hurry. And I asked the group, I asked the crowd, okay, you want, you want spending, you want tax cuts? Okay, we get spending cuts. Where do we cut the services? You're out of order. I mean, they were reacting to me the way a group of vampires would react if I had waved a crucifix in front of them. So this is why I'm voting for the tax increase. We need the money to slow the rate at which we are running through our reserves, to postpone the day when we are going to have to have real tax increases or real spending cuts. That day's going to come, that day may come fairly soon. It's going to be postponed if we go with this tax increase. Now, getting back to this chart, Kenny, I hope that this proves to be right. If this proves to be right, then quite frankly, this is going to be one of the greatest acts of financial analysis. We've seen one of the greatest acts of financial analysis that I've seen in my close to fourteen years on the council, which after tonight's talk may well be the last year. However, I gotta say again, they're already getting ready, I gotta say again, I personally need more time. I need more review. I need more give, take, debate, analysis, before I can cast a vote on the basis of this. I devoutly hope it's right. If it's right, I congratulate you on your initiative in presenting it, but for the time being, in the absence of the additional analysis which I think is required, I will vote to increase the tax rate to forty-nine and a half cents. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cross. Anyone else wishing to, Mr. Nix?
Thank you, Kenny. I did not bring any visual aids. I didn't realize that we needed those, but that was quite interesting, Brady. Malcolm, thank you for your thoughts, I appreciate that. I want to back up a couple of weeks to begin with, and, you know, we, we worked long, many, many hours on the budget. The council had several workshops, we worked a lot of hours on it, and we didn't work as many hours as staff did on it. And I want to say that, that they put in an extreme amount of time working on a budget, trying to present it to us. It's not as easy as doing the math, I wish it were, but they do a good job of that, and I appreciate that. One of the problems that we face every year is there's a number of requests for equipment and personnel and programs and things, that there's not enough money to go around. We asked that the staff this year present us with their priorities, and specific priorities in each department, and they did that. And we funded those priorities as far as we could, using the money that was available. When we came to vote on what I thought we had agreed on as the budget, at, at what I'm gonna say, the fifty-ninth minute of the eleventh hour, we have an amendment thrown on the floor and seconded. It, it was a very specific amendment that changed what we had done significantly in my mind. It was gonna cut some places that I didn't feel like it was appropriate to cut, it added some items back that I, that we had not funded, because we didn't feel it was a priority. It did not come to the top of the list. But we did not have time, as Malcolm said tonight, to really consider that. We got to see it, we got to listen to it, we talked about it briefly, but we had to vote on it. We had to make a decision that night. I find it ironic that that amendment was made when the last night of the budget workshop, a request had been made to add a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the budget for three specific programs that hadn't made the cut. Nobody but the council and a few staff members heard that, and it, if there was an offer at that time to support the budget and to support the tax rate, if that hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars was added to the budget, instead of coming up with an amendment that decreased the budget. I, I saw that, and, and then another thing that I found ironic in the budget amendment was we added a program, again, that had not made the cut, but that had been talked about, the Code Red program. I was a little bit confused by this when I learned that the county had indeed initiated a process to provide Code Red for the county, that's E. Rath County. Last time I checked, the city of Stephenville is inside E. Rath County. I think all of us pay taxes to E. Rath County, and yet E. Rath County, in their wisdom, decided to exclude the city of Stephenville. Now, I think I'm getting double taxed, and I don't enjoy that. I'm gonna pay the county to provide it for part of the county, and I'm gonna pay the city to pay, to provide it for the city. I don't care for that. I, I don't understand it, I don't think it's fair. I think we, as citizens of the city of Stephenville, deserve the same representation and the same consideration that they give others, but apparently we don't do that. I certainly don't like being double taxed, and this is only one instance of that. That brings us to where we are tonight, I think, the tax rate. Last year's tax rate was forty-eight and a half cents per hundred. This year's proposal in the budget, that I, again, I thought we had agreed to, was forty-nine and a half. Add one penny per hundred, it's already been said, that's about ten dollars on a hundred-thousand-dollar house per year, that's about eighty-three, eighty-three cents a month. That's, that's pretty limited, minimal, in my mind at least. Really and truly, and, and Malcolm said a number of things, and I wish I had the, the forethought and the eloquence that he did, and I wish I had the visual aids that Brady did, but really, we've gotta decide, do we wanna move forward as a city? Do we wanna be progressive? Do we wanna continue to fund streets, public safety, parks, rec, library, senior citizens, the things that we've always provided for the quality of life? And do we wanna continue to provide these things with the thought in mind that these will include and incur some growth in the city, because we offer these things to people? And, and I think, as far as economic growth, having good services, having good streets, having good programs in the parks and recs and other areas, I think that's good for the city, and I think it adds to the city. I have heard it said, and, and tonight it was pretty well refuted, that we had a balanced budget. It was even printed in the newspaper, we had a balanced budget. We don't. We're nearly half a million dollars upside down in the budget, and I'm uncomfortable with that. And I think, as Dr. Cross said, we need to leave the penny in there, try to reduce that redu- as, as much as we can with that and leave it. I intend to support the proposed tax rate of forty-nine and a half cents. Maybe we can continue to fund all the activities. I hope your projection on the sales tax is right, but as with the budget amendment, I'm uncomfortable with it without a little more time to think and a little more time to consider it. If we can continue our activities and programs, we'll, should attract more businesses, we should attract those people who come and shop, we should attract the employees for the businesses. I think it's gonna be better for the city, I think it's gonna be better for everyone, and I think Stephenville will continue to move forward. And, and one last point, I want everybody out there, wherever, whatever sides you're on, and it bothers me that we have taken sides on this, we need to be united, and Larry left, but I wanted to thank him, because we need to be united as a community. But all of us up here on the council, we all pay the same property tax you do, we all pay the same water rate you do, we all pay the same garbage, garbage rate you do. We're not immune or exempt, we pay the same fees for the same services that you do. And we wanna do our best to continue to provide, to provide the best possible services for the money for the residents of Stephenville, and for those people who will move here, they just haven't been blessed yet to live here. But we hope they will soon. Thank you.
I want to thank those who have contacted me in the last few weeks. I said that last time, and I, I meant that. I don't guess, I guess what happened was it initiated even more contacts, the emails, the phone calls. I was mowing grass Saturday, and I had three people stop by my houses to stop and talk about it, and my front yard took an hour and a half to mow because of that. I see people at the store, I've had calls at work, I've had calls at home, when I'm on the road. I've had a lot of feedback, and I do admit that Mr. Hammett did send a very pleasant email to me yesterday, and I responded and asked him for some clarification, he did so in a very pleasant way. And I appreciate the things that he said. However, that is the only comment I had from someone asking that I raise the taxes, or that I vote to raise taxes. Let me make a few comments. This is an incredibly emotional issue. I'm not a paid litigator, so I'm not gonna, I don't tend to say that I can speak as well as some, or I don't teach every day, so I don't necessarily analyze things the same way, but I am a businessperson. And I understand that what this has done is just create a lot of emotion that's recognized, there's no doubt, because of the people who are here tonight, the people who are here the last few weeks. And I think some of that is based on fear, is based on the fear of what happens if we don't raise taxes, we're gonna have to cut services. If we do raise taxes, what's gonna be, happen to my business, my personal economy? Some of that's unknown, just like the budget that, our proposal that the mayor brought tonight, is, is based on the unknown, we're guessing. However, I wanna comment on a few things that were said tonight. One of them is we talked about not running the city like a business. Well, we're government, you're right, we're not a business, but I tell you, the state of Texas decided many years ago that we needed to run some of our, some of our government as a business. We call them enterprise zones, enterprises. We have a water fund and a sewer fund, they have to be run like a business, because the purpose of it is to say, you have to be able to pay for the service. Cities, what they were doing was they were borrowing money from waters and sewer systems to pay for operations. Well, you've heard tonight, and you've heard several nights the last few weeks, that we've gone into deficit spending, we have. But the government said, you need to operate as a business for these items, because the, one of the primary functions you have is to provide water and sewer. So we do need to operate as a business, and I can tell you that, from the phone calls, I had one person come to me the other day, and he said, you know, as he stood my, in my driveway, said, you know, I, I trust you to do what's best, just make sure you do the right thing. And I said, well, what's the right thing? He said, don't raise my taxes. Well, that's part of that. Well, the other thing I talked, that I heard, you've heard tonight, is that we agreed on a budget. Well, the last night we had the budget workshop, one of the questions was asked, we went around the room and said, do you agree on the budget? And I'm here to tell you that the question when it came to me is, I said, I'm not sure. I can't vote right today on this budget, because it has a tax increase. And so I, I'm not gonna necessarily say how many people did say yes or no, but my opinion at the time was, I didn't agree. And I needed to have more time to look at it, just like Dr. Cross said, and that's when I came to the decision I did last two weeks ago, to vote for the tax, or, excuse me, the budget at forty-eight and a half cents. What are the ramifications of us raising taxes? You know, there's three ways we raise money. First way that we raise it is to increase our tax rates. One cent a hundred, two cents a hundred, three cents a hundred. We also do it by increasing the values of our properties. Well, we haven't even discussed that. Our values, properties, not everybody, but a lot of people's values went up this year. Means, because we're keeping it at forty-eight and a half cents, your taxes went up. So you have a tax increase, even if we don't do a one percent or one cent per hundred tax increase. So there is an increase in value. The other way we can do is grow our business, grow the economy. Well, you look at the taxes, the sales tax, that probably represents growth in Stephenville, Texas, well, you know, we had a litigator a minute ago give us an idea of what our tax rates have been like. See how low they've been? And yet what's happened to our economy? Our economy has grown, so it doesn't take tax increases to grow our economy. We have some long-term problems that haven't even been talked about. I think we run, we have run from these problems. I came on the council, this is my third budget process. And one of the things I asked the very first budget, I asked last budget, and I've asked this budget all during the process, is what are we gonna do about our long-term problems? Right now, we had to borrow money to, to drive, to fix Harbin Drive. We had to borrow money to put, fix Dale Street. We have a problem, we're gonna increase your, we're gonna increase our debt service to fix sewer problems that we have on existing sewer, not new sewers, existing sewer, we're gonna borrow money. So let me talk a little bit about that issue of, you know, that we can't print money. Well, when the U.S. government prints money, what are they doing? They're not just going to Xerox machine. What they're doing is they're taking money and they're selling those dollars to somebody for interest, at an interest rate. So they're borrowing money, they're just calling it printing money. In city government, we call that borrowing money. Or, to make it more politically correct, we call it issuing debt, because it sounds better. But really what it is, is we're borrowing money. The problem with our society is that we have debt out of control. One of, I think one of the greatest people we have in our country with economists is Dave Ramsey. What's Dave Ramsey tell you over and over? Get out of debt. Quit borrowing money. That, 'cause that's what, you know, I had a really good friend, she's no longer here, but she's a very successful businessperson, she said, there's a reason that bankers drive Cadillacs. She said, don't you wanna drive the Cadillac instead? Quit borrowing money. I'm sorry if there's some bankers here, you know, but that's, that's the truth. We have some long-term issues that we haven't talked about. It's gonna require debt or tax increases. We've talked about Eastside Sewer. I think the number we've used is ten million dollars. Think about that, ten million dollars. We have a new water source, we need to get more water, we're talking about new water source. Well, that's gonna be five, six, seven, ten million dollars. We have a problem with road rehab. In our budget today, I don't think there's any money budgeted for, for roads in the city of Stephenville the next year. The stu- this information that the staff brought to us is, we need to spend somewhere between one million and one-point-two million dollars a year, just to keep up with existing street repairs. We have nothing budgeted for that. So let's say we go through our four years, there's another three, four, or five million dollars. What are we gonna do about it? Where are we gonna get that money? And then we throw out the thing that has probably been the biggest taught, discussed subject in Stephenville, Texas, since I've been here, a multipurpose building. We gotta do this because of all, I've heard the good and the bad. Well, when I first asked the question, how much is that gonna cost? Someone said, oh, twenty-two, twenty-five million dollars. I just listed forty to forty-five million dollars of stuff we haven't talked about in the budget. We've never just, we haven't, now, we do back there. I mean, we have some really pretty, you know, Scott and I have never gone to fisticuffs before, 'cause we're good friends, but, you know, we go out here tonight, we'll have a hamburger together. But we have some differences on some of those kinds of issues. Because where are we gonna pay for all this stuff? The only way to do it, in my opinion, is not to print money or borrow money, it's not necessarily to raise taxes, but it's to grow our business, grow our economy, in a way that, you know, what, how do you do that? I'm not a rocket scientist. I'm not, there's a lot of people out here who are a whole lot better than that, than I am. But my guess is, it's you who have a business, who've invested in your business, have seen your business grow. We've used a phrase in our discussions, it's about time we give ourselves a pay raise. It's one of the phrases we've, we've used before. Well, how do you give a pay raise? We had someone recently, and I think it was Matt got up and talked about, how do you get a pay raise? Well, the way you do it is you go produce more. Well, no government can tax more. That's how you can do that. Well, I'd prefer the other one, other way, which is to create more business in our community. I've heard it said that taxes and death go together, it's the only two things that you know for sure will happen. Well, that's probably true. We know taxes, and unfortunately, I think some of the folks who spoke tonight were right, taxes always go up, they rarely go down. Now, I tell you what, I have seen staff do wondrous, wondrous things in our budget. They have scrapped, there's no doubt about that. We have cut, we have, as a matter of fact, the city administrator will tell you, the number one thing I told him when I came on council, he says, what's your number one goal? I said, quit borrowing money. Quit going deficit. We need to do some things to pay for what it costs, what we do. One of the things that I made a recommendation for, which in a sense is we do. One of the things that I made a recommendation for, which in a sense is also an increase in taxes, is your water rates went up. We had an increased water rate. So it's not just a one cent tax increase, it's a water rate increase as well. Well, it's because it's an enterprise. Enterprise says it costs a sex number of dollars to do something. So you need to raise that much money to pay for what it takes to do that service. So we have increases other than just a one cent tax increase. We have appraisals, appreciation or appraisals that rose. We have a proposed one cent tax increase. We have also, in addition to that, we have a water rate increase. And there's going to be other increases that we may have to look at because we have a service that we have to provide to the community. And the question comes down, Dr. Cross said, and it was in that same meeting, and I was sitting kind of in front of him, and he made the comment, what do y'all want to cut? One of the people in the room said something, and it just floored me. I thought, that's really, that's right. I don't get paid to do that. You do. You know, and so I'm thinking, you know, do we cut services? I don't know. You know, do we give employees pay rates? You know, when I came on the, the council, we talked about pay raises. And some of the, also, by the way, pay raises aren't just in dollars. Pay raises are also in things like when insurance rates go up, cost of insurance, you pay extra insurance. It includes things like when your retirement plan goes down in value because we guarantee an income, we have to raise how much we spend on retirement to expect, to make sure that that guarantee is there. There's other kinds of increases that happen besides just so many dollars per hour. And I think that it's, the very first year I came on the budget, I asked the question, why do we decide to give what we do to employees? The answer was, we have too few and not enough. Don't pay enough. Well, I don't doubt that. I don't doubt that at all, because I've talked to some of the folks on what they get paid. I've seen, I see the pay rates. I know what they do. But the problem is, you don't just come in and say, here's a bunch of money, let's do something with it. Or here's a little bit of money, let's do a little bit about it, and y'all be happy, happy with that. We need to address the problem. And I'll tell you, and I'm not sure everybody, like Malcolm says, maybe I'll be elected again, but, you know, if it comes back to that's what we need to do, then I'll vote for that, because we need to pay our employees what they're worth. But so far, for three years, we haven't figured out what that is. Matter of fact, last year I voted for three hundred thousand dollar increase in wages. And I said at the time, I'm doing that praying that this council will stand up and say, let's go out and do a study. Let's figure out what that number really is. Well, we had that on, in plans to do that. You know, we haven't gotten it done yet, but we're, we're fussing over how much money we're giving for pay raises. We're going to have to give pay raises for people to stay. There's no doubt about it. There's no doubt about it. So we're going to have to do something. But tonight, I won't vote for the increase because I don't think we know what that increase is. I don't think we know what our needs are. I think there's areas that we could look at and cut our budget. I do believe that. I think you're right. Whoever was over here that said, you know, can you cut twenty dollars out of two thousand bucks? You know, I work in, I work for the government and the business I'm in, and in the last five years, we've had five percent rating, rate decrease in the last five years. We have a person out here right now, Danny's out here, and he is, you know, he's in the same kind of business. We've made less money as increases in costs have gone. What do you do? You twist your arm, you do the best you can, and you do the best with what you have. And I think that's why I'll vote for a forty-eight and a half cent tax increase. I apologize for taking so much time, Mayor.
It's all right. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Any other comments?
Mayor, I have some comments to make.
Okay. Mr. McDaniel?
The first thing I'd like to do is point out that the only way that you pay twice for code red is if the county pays twenty-three thousand for everybody in the county, and then the city pays ten thousand dollars for everybody in the county. That's the only way you pay twice for it. It was added to the budget amendment because it's important. Remember what happened to Granbury? They had code red. It saved lives. I'd like to share a quote with you from Ronald Reagan. He says that government's view of the economy can be summed up in a few short phrases. If it moves, tax it. If it keeps moving, regulate it. And if it stops moving, subsidize it. That is so true. I have a, I have some information that I'd like to share. I was hoping that when I shared this with the council, the people watching at home, and the large audience we have here today, that the decision would not, have already been made by Dr. Cross about how he's going to vote. It's not too late to change your mind, sir. We had a hundred and thirty employees, and the tax rate was forty-three and a half cents in fiscal year oh eight, oh nine, when I first came to council. The debate tonight and the vote will be to hold the rate at forty-eight and a half and not increase taxes on all citizens, or increase it to forty-nine and a half cents, which is an increase of thirteen point eight percent since May of oh eight, almost fourteen percent. Now, there was some things said last week that I would like to address. In two thousand and eight, I ran for an open seat on this council. To learn more about the core function of government, public safety, I went on citizen ride-alongs with police patrol officers. I wanted to see for myself the ordeals that the officers face. I learned much through observation and believed that these experiences have made me a better council member. I also discovered at that time that their pay scale was too low compared to what other towns were paying their officers. In my first budget vote after being elected, which was September second, two thousand and eight, there was a budget amendment made at, at the last minute with no warning. I supported the budget amendment. It was to add a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the already two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that was in the budget for increases for all city employees. That extra hundred and thirty-five thousand was for police officers. The amendment was made. I seconded it. And you can see the minutes of the meeting online, September second, two thousand and eight. They're on the website for anybody to look up. Three of us voted for that amendment, but not having a majority, it failed. I tell you this to show that my record of being a strong supporter of public safety has been consistent since my election. After a few years, my goal of becoming chairman of the Public Health and Safety Committee was achieved. The requests from Police Chief Hossel and current Chief Bridges on the committee's agendas have received favorable recommendations and then approval of full council. I applaud all the members of the Public Health and Safety Committee for their dedication. The only areas that have not received approval have been in the budget due to budgetary restraints. The new budget that we ratified two weeks ago includes the much-needed four full-time dispatchers and proper funding for their training. That was part of the budget, too. We're going to hire four full-time dispatchers, spend two hundred thousand dollars a year on their compensation, but there was no training in the budget. Made good sense. Several years ago, council considered a proposal to build a new fire station with a price tag of about five million dollars. We wisely chose to wait. Our new fire station on the Northwest Loop will soon be in operation at a cost of two and a half million dollars. A huge savings to the city and all the taxpayers. We, the council and staff, are making a positive impact for all the people in the community. Last week, one council member said y'all were treated unfairly, referring to a majority vote of the council to balance the budget without increasing taxes on all property owners in the city. This was a compromise budget amendment that held the tax rate the same as last year's by deferring a little over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of a proposed quarter million dollars. That's right. The proposed budget has a quarter million dollars for employee pay raises, and we don't have the pay plan, so I can't say if everybody deserves that. I know a lot of people do. So that, knowing that at midterm, we almost always have revenues over expenses at midterm. We have ever since I've been on the, on the council that I know of. That is how we keep the rate where it is and not have a tax increase. They're still getting a hundred and, over a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Okay? So I, I did the math. This is my sixth budget. I added up and got information from the city secretary on how much we've been spending on additional compensation, wage increases for our employees. And the grand total, including the current budget of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, is seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus, and it's been budgeted for all employees for pay raises. That's an average of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, every year. Is that enough to be competitive? Probably not. But we're moving in the right direction. The last two years prior to the current year, there was zero, there was zero in there for employee increased compensation. But yet, it still averages out over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Do we have an employee turnover problem? If you're in business, that's one thing that you look at. Do we have a turnover problem? I don't believe the monthly reports that we receive from staff show that we do. Is higher employee salaries one of our priorities? Yes, it is. But as with all items in the budget, our commitment must be balanced with the impact of any additional tax burdens on all of our citizens. We have to treat them fairly also and determine how higher taxes will affect our local economy. From two thousand and five to two thousand and eight, when property values were, went up dramatically, the tax rate was lowered each year. We see that on page two of our budget. And the very first page of our new budget book shows that with a tax increase, and I'd like to tell you the numbers that I've been given. The, it says, the budget will rise more than, more total property, will raise more total property tax by last year's by six point eight percent. And of that amount, seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty dollars is tax revenue from new property added to the tax roll this So it goes to forty-nine and a half. It, it generates an extra two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The worksheet we were given during the budget work session on September sixth of this year also shows on the bottom line, number eleven, that the percent tax increase without new growth is four point nine two percent. I've seen no staff provide, provided documents that show anything lower. On page twenty-five of our current budget, fiscal year twelve, thirteen, it shows reserve funding of over seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. There's been big banter about, oh, we're, we're having to spend from reserves. This time last year, the budget had seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that we were spending from reserves. This year, in the new budget, it shows reserve funding after the amendment of four hundred and eighty thousand. That's three, three hundred thousand less. Reserves are excess revenues over expenditures. And it's three hundred thousand less this year than last. I don't see this to be an issue. The best way to increase revenues for the city is to grow the tax roll, not the tax rate. Last week, you also heard that for the last sixteen months, much emphasis and energy have been invested in economic development efforts. Yes, that's true. They have. That's, that's when Kenny came on board, Mayor Weldon started presiding as the mayor. Economic development is also one of our major priorities. On page five of the new budget, it shows unfunded projects, and sadly, three of these items are key to helping us grow the community at a rate above the two percent growth we see now. Tax increment financing, a thoroughfare plan, which is a plan for our future streets, an annexation, our future land use plan. They're not funded. They're not in the budget. Several of us feel these items are significant tools that the city can utilize successfully to promote growth and increase city revenues, both through new property taxes and sales taxes. The cost of these three unfunded items and tools that we could use is only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. So in addition to our priority of increased pay for employees, these economic tools are not being fully funded either. You also heard last week that the numbers on this quarter of sales tax and our revenue fund those sales is running below projections. Do you believe that raising taxes on all the citizens and businesses will help turn that around? Ronald Reagan cut taxes to improve the economy. Council member Casey Hogan correctly stated last week that raising taxes will kill the economy. Mr. Hogan also said, we need to be more business-friendly, and we don't even have a point person for new business prospects to go to first. Dr. Cross, our mayor pro tem, stressed last week the relationship of cutting expenditures as necessary and the retrenchment of finances. I'm on board. Our annual losses at Flashfield is sixty-one thousand. We lose five thousand dollars a month on it, whether it's open or not. Let's cut there. Let's cut those losses. Dr. Cross has been involved in more city budgets than the rest of all of us on council. His words to this council carry wisdom and experience. Thank you, sir, for voting for the budget amendment that holds the line on the tax rate for all our citizens. And thank you for seeing that a midterm budget, at midterm budget, we can restore the one point four percent in wage increases that all of us want to provide. We have heard from small business owners over the last few weeks asking us not to raise their taxes. I can't remember the last time I've seen this many large crowds. Thank you for being here. They provide jobs in the community, and some are struggling to make a living. They cannot afford a higher tax bill. Our citizens and our business owners are already facing increases of up to seven and a half percent on their future water and sewer bills, as well as school tax increases approximately two percent. Let's not treat these citizens unfairly either. Business, businesses closing their doors cost people their jobs and cost the city in lost revenues also. They tighten their belts in times like this. We should, too. In closing, I'd like to share some of what I see on our streets as I deliver the mail. The realities of families that are struggling just to get by day to day. I frequently pick up applications addressed to the Health and Human Services Commission in Midland, Texas, asking for assistance. I see checks from Catholic charities in Fort Worth arriving while the people are outside their homes waiting for the mail. They tell me they're headed to the bank and then to the grocery store. I see people walk to the convenience store to buy groceries because they have no car. I've seen two empty houses with foreclosure notices taped on the windows in the last six months, one on Pecan Street and one on Stevens Street. I see garage sales in families' front yards. No permit displayed, and they're more often than allowed. Selling toys and clothes the children have outgrown. I ask, what are you going to spend the money on you get from the garage sale? They said, on food, bills, and gas to get to work and back. I see the faces, the faces of- I see the faces of people signing for certified letters for bills they cannot pay. There's an elderly gentleman on North Belknap Street that signed for a letter from the city code enforcement one day because his yard went unmowed. He told me he was diabetic. He didn't own a lawnmower. And he was too poor to have it cut. I saw the hopelessness on his face and felt guilty for bringing the letter. His home was wrapped outside with a material to keep out the bad weather, a dead tree resting against his roof. He owns this modest home, and he pays taxes. Let's be fair to him also. I know a woman who lives on Frye Street. She lost her husband in a tragic accident at a local railroad crossing. The last I spoke to her, she was looking for a job. She used to waitress for years, but her health won't allow her to be on her feet all day now. She owns her small home and pays taxes, too. Let's be fair to her. I could go on and on. I've been serving the same people for seven years, and it's not the affluent side of town. We, as council members, represent all the people. Let's stand firm on the balanced budget. We've ratified and vote yes on the motion to keep the tax rate unchanged and treat all of our citizens fairly also. Thank you for listening.
Mayor, I move the question. Okay, the question's been called. And the motion that's on the floor is to adopt a tax rate of... If I remember the motion correctly. 485. Yes, sir. For 2013. Okay, so I'll proceed with the vote and do that with roll call. Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
No.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
No.
Place six.
No.
Place seven.
No.
Place eight.
No.
Okay, and the mayor will vote aye. So, it's a five to four vote. The motion fails.
I would make a motion that would set the tax rate at 49.5 cents.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Evans, seconded by Ms. Taylor, to adopt a tax rate of 49.5 for 2013. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll proceed to vote. And we'll do that by roll call. In favor of the 49.5% tax rate for 2013, place one.
No.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
No.
Place four.
No.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Yes.
Place seven.
Yes.
Place eight.
Yes.
Okay. And I'll vote no with that, so it's a five to four vote. That motion carries. And that's ordinance... Cindy, can you help me here with the number?
Yes, 15.
15. So, that's approval of ordinance 2013-15 adopting the tax rate for 2013 of .495. Okay. With that, we'll move... We'll move on to item three on the agenda, which is considered approval for ordinance 2016, which provides budget amendments for 2012 and 2013. And Mark, you want to just give us a quick summary of what we're acting on here?
Yes, there are documents with explanation, full explanation, are attached as a part of your agenda, pages two through six. But in summary, let me just state that we've received additional revenue of $202,800, and some of the items that have... We know will be going over budget by the end of the year are also listed there. And those expenditures basically balance out at $202,800. And with that said, I'll just say net effect to this year's budget
Okay.
for those activities.
All right, so I'll consider a motion for that?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Sveens, seconded by Mr. Evans to approve ordinance 2013-16 providing budget amendments $202,800 in increased revenue for 2012-2013 budget. Any discussion? Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimous vote. Before we conclude tonight, let me just say this. This has been an evening where we, as a community, have debated an issue in a way that the founders of this country intended. And we ought to be proud of that. I know I'm proud of that. There are no winners and losers tonight. We can't think about it that way. That does us no good whatsoever. I think what we need to understand is there is a process in place for decisions to be made, and we need to be thankful for that. We live, as was stated earlier, in a community that is so blessed in so many ways. And I think what we need to do from here forward is not lose sight of that as we together work to make this community be the very best that it can for all the citizens that are involved. I will restate my commitment, and I know the council's commitment on the one November pay issue. And I think that the other thing that I want to mention that came out tonight in the discussion that I know we have a renewed commitment to, and that is, what are the requirements that exist in this community that require funding and us having a definition on those so that we can... cannot... We don't have to guess at what a number is, that we have... We have numbers defined in a manner that lend themselves to this debate within the budget. And that process begins, in my mind, on one October as we begin to work on next year's budget. And so, we're not gonna wait, like we did last year, until January to have an offsite and then figure out where we are in March. We're gonna start that one October. And we're gonna... That, I think, will give us the momentum that we need to get through November and come into January with a clear understanding of the shaping of some of these issues. So, I want to thank the council for your work on this, this budget. Mark, you and your staff, I want to thank you for your hard work on this budget. I... There are hours, hours, that have been spent discussing these issues. And I'll tell you, the citizens of this community ought to be proud of that. We are not just going in a room and saying, "What do you want to do? Okay, let's go do it." We are debating these issues, as you have seen tonight. And I hope you've seen tonight discussion that is refreshing to you in that you may have disagreed with the answer, but the debate took place. And that's what we're asked to do. And I'm encouraged, as we move forward, that that will mean we'll be successful in the end. And so, thank you for all that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Ms. Taylor to adjourn. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we're adjourned at 7:30.